The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a vision just for all.
First I am up today is post-construction regarding road closure. Which one of you three would like to?
Sorry, first? Greg, you want to start?
Greg, you want to start?
Okay. Just a little bit of an update at the same time, we were in earlier and requested a little change from Phase One signing where instead of closing roads sixty consecutive days, then we were closed when we were putting pipe in only and we have it open again, but we requested to keep sixty working days, not consecutive days. We have, we're starting to ensoul another pipe this morning and that leaves one of seventeen left to put in and we've used thirty days of the sixty. So the other matter, the road's been open every day to locals. It's going very well. We have had absolute communication with the locals. I checked with Kevin, he's had no calls, no complaints. There are a couple people there that even went to town, got a mailbox in town and said, "Make sure the mailman come out." So it's going extremely well. The difference between Phase One and Phase Two signing is Phase One is road closed, local traffic only. And that's where most of your jobs have been over the years when we do grade raises and we do something. But this Phase Two, we take those signs down, we put up, and we don't have a road closed, we have speed limits and then we get into more signing and we have flag people and we would need to have a pilot car because of the congestion we have on the road. There's gonna be twenty trucks there and it's just a lot of promotion in a four mile stretch. And Phase One is working so well, we did a little checking with Paul and figuring out some different quantities and pricing and things. And by staying with Phase One, we would eliminate sixty thousand dollars worth of flagging. We would eliminate either some traffic control gravel, surface gravel, another forty-eight thousand dollars in savings, some signing and other things. We'll come up with a hundred and nine thousand dollars worth of savings to the job. And we checked with locals to see if it stayed the way it was for the entire job, do you have any issues or if anyone has a problem with anything. They know that they'll come and check with us before they come down the road with their thirty-six foot header and we'll let them through, no problem. And the road will be open. It won't be dug up like now when we close the road, we're putting in a pipe so you can't get through. But everybody has worked around it remarkably well. And our, one gentleman that wasn't really in favor of it up there just gave us some land to stockpile there. So it's very, very good, it's going smoothly and by leaving it just the way it is, the road will be open, local traffic. There's no mail route, there's no bus route, there's no need for others to go through. And we feel for a safety issue, even if we had flaggers there, that the traffic that we're gonna get out of the locals might just be fishermen or it could be sightseers who really don't have a purpose to be there and we just don't wanna have an accident or issues. And if we can pass on substantial savings to the company and things are going well, that's what we're trying to establish here if we can by continuing with the Phase One.
Just let it down, don't everybody speed it up, speed up the process?
It will, yeah.
Well, as Greg said, it will actually speed up the, speed up the time for the farmers as well.
Yeah, the whole process.
But I mean for farmers so they don't have to stop for flaggers or...
Yeah, if we had multiple flaggers, we could have, without a pilot car, we could have needed for each flagger like four different locations. And every time somebody gets one of those, they'd have to stop and wait. This way they can proceed through. My superintendent up there is in communication with those guys and they know when they come up to where we're working, how to get around regardless of last form and it's gone very smoothly.
The one guy that's living out there, he's still traveling back and forth, he's still living out there?
Yeah, and he's had a nice, because when we're putting in pipe, for east of him, he just goes west, for west of him, he goes east.
Motion, is there a second?
All second.
Motion and a second?
I've got one question. When, when we do a change, I guess I don't, is there any chance of, how do I wanna put it? Losing funding by changing?
Right, Kevin.
We won't lose the funding though.
And?
Is there anything that we could lose?
Disconvenience for the people that wanna try and get through that.
But I mean, as far as the contract and with the federal government being involved and that?
I don't think so.
It's got this kind of some courtesy meeting on our part, I asked to get together. This, I have to send a letter to Paul. KLJ has to send a letter to the DOT. It has to get approved at the district level, that goes to Bismarck, gets approved there, goes to the federal highway, gets approved there. If it gets unapproved, it just goes back to the way the plan is.
Oh, okay.
So there's no chance of losing funding.
Okay, that's, you answered my question.
Okay.
Okay, you're good.
But that's why we had to have this session, so we could get through step one.
Yeah, and one of the questions that will come up with the district and/or Bismarck would be the owners, you guys, you know, if you're on board with us or not.
Yeah.
So it's not like we're trying to cram it down. So if you guys weren't in favor of it, we just stop right there.
Okay, I have two questions.
One thing I might add too is there's gonna be a little bit of savings for the engineering work too. There won't be quite as many tests for compaction and, you know, the job's gonna go past her, so everyone spends many hours out there inspecting. There is a potential for savings here. One other thing I wanted to bring up was when Paul Lee and I were looking at designing this, we, you know, we wanted it kept open then because that's what you guys were wishing and it just turns out that the people have found a way around or whatever and the traffic's just not there. So this is a good way for us to say.
There's a motion and a second. Road code, please.
Curtis.
Aye.
Deesel.
Aye.
Ron.
Aye.
Isler.
Aye, motion carried. Second item on our agenda is the LEC discussion. I had this put on the agenda today just because we're, we're having a meeting and I wanted the board to know that in my mind, we took a huge step backwards last week. They rescinded the motion to go back to allowing our administrative staff to fire, hire and fire people again. I just thought it was a huge step backwards. I wanted the board to know. We, I gave you a letter, Ed, there today of all the issues. I believe that letter just kinda got swished under the rug. It's a lot of issues going on at jail and I wanted you to know about it from my board member position. And I was wondering if you had any questions.
Mr. Sherman, one question. Did they give a reason why they felt that that should be rescinded?
Micromanagement? They figured, they felt that they were being micromanaged?
Who felt?
There's, there's some more on there if you'd love to comment.
Yeah, I would, I would like you to, that us not allowing them to fire people, we were micromanaging. And I welcome your comments, Bill.
First and foremost, that is the number one bullet point of the administration's job description. To keep employees hired, terminate employees when needed and to keep the law enforcement center operational. None of those people, those four people that were let go, you could let them leave, it was twenty, it was four. None of those people got let go without thoroughly, thoroughly gone through, not only the administration, the captain, the HR, and not without performance plans, not with every issue being addressed. Some of the things that happened here, that, that, let's stop, just, no, let me finish here, let me finish. If the incident that happened last week, we had to call a special board meeting to get that done, we wouldn't have got that done, which we had to send Sheriff Nelson, give one of the board members, so that we could get it done. If that wouldn't have got done, we wouldn't have been able to have that meeting. That person would have still been in our appointment when he got arrested. And the story in the newspaper would have been different. Let me, let me finish. Here's some questions that need to be answered. When we talk about board members, do we hire and fire them? Are board members comfortable about their knowledge of labor laws? Do they know how to, how and when to seek legal advice when proceeding with terminations and disciplinary actions? Do they know how the regulations such as ADA, FMLA can affect the potential termination decision? They must have gone on to fire that guy.
Must have been able to figure that one out.
Have any of them, have any of these board members here, our LEC board member in particular, gone to the administration out there and sat down and visited with them? He said, "I don't know, I'm not on board." No.
What's that mean then?
That means that, that means that when somebody says they're uninformed, that's the reason why.
What, you mean those board members, they should be running out there every day to that law enforcement center? I don't, I think that's totally uncalled for, way above the...
Through this ordeal, through this ordeal, Commissioner, I've asked several times for that to happen and it hasn't happened yet.
What happened?
So for him to go out and take a biased opinion. Who? Me. Or? Paul. Go out and talk to them. You're listening to hearsay, you're listening to people who won't sign papers, you're listening to sources...
It, it's not hearsay, Bill. There's, there's a letter sitting right in front of Ed that points out countless violations that we have. And mysteriously, then this little letter shows up after his letter shows up.
No, it didn't.
It did.
Oh, come on.
That was on, that was on the table two weeks before Rob's late.
I don't, I don't, I don't believe that. I don't believe that, not for one minute. Uh, we, we had a whole building full of people the other day who wanted to talk, but weren't allowed to talk. You don't read by interpretation and that's what that is. I'm not going out there and listening to her tell me lies. She's lied and lied and lied to me. I've had it with all her lies. We have all kinds of people that are looking for jobs. It's ridiculous. The morale is zero at that building and now it went below zero because these people are scared. You think anybody's gonna talk now? Nobody's gonna talk and that's exactly what they wanted. Because they're all afraid of their job now.
Bill, I would like to, I would like to have a chance to make a couple of points.
I didn't even get finished with mine, you go ahead.
No, keep going, Bill. No, you go ahead and finish.
Yeah.
We, we won't answer to anything that you're saying because you wanna finish first. Go ahead.
Okay, this is coming from our HR director.
Is that the one that's supposed to have the study done before you give any raises? Is that her, was that her doing that or not? I never, who was it?
No, that's, the person that's supposed to do that is the person who was hired to do the HR director's job because she couldn't get it done.
The interrupted atmosphere of meetings. This is the most dysfunctional board I've ever been in.
Who's, who's the one that was supposed to do the study? Who's that?
Someone they hired in addition to their HR director.
We know who it is, Mike.
He's a parent.
He's a, he's a professional.
Yep.
That's all he does is...
I, I think we should just let Commissioner finish this, and then we can all have our...
We'll each have ours.
So as I was saying, have any of them gone to the administrative's office and asked to review the personnel files of those who have been terminated? If not, where have they obtained that information? If they cannot identify credible unbiased sources from which their information has been obtained, a full investigation is a viewpoint. Unless they are fully informed, they have no business discussing this topic. Everything they know or think they know has been provided to them from one side. They have not once attempted to bring their concerns directly to the other party, meaning the administrators, and this is the number one error when a termination is being considered. It's quite clear that many of them wish to terminate Danny and Peggy, yet they have not made a single attempt at completing a full investigation of the matter that they feel are justified for termination. We would be in the world of hurt if we approached every potential termination in the same manner as which they are approaching this one. It is not your place to complete an investigation. It is the responsibility of the LEC board and the LEC board has done their job and stands behind the firm administration based on the votes at the last few meetings. I think our business, right here, should be to try to figure out how much money we are willing to spend and get that number to the administrators at the law enforcement center immediately so we can get on with our jobs. This witch hunt is over.
Well, I don't consider it a witch hunt and it's not over.
Well, who prompted the motion to have them?
Do you think that Danny and Peggy have an unbiased opinion?
Who prompted the motion to have them resign or have them terminated?
Mike Stephan.
Yep. And what was his answer to that? I mean, what, what was he gonna do if that happened?
I don't know.
Do you think for a minute that this board or any other of the county commissioners' boards could run that law enforcement center?
But, Bill...
Your focus is to close the center. Your focus is to give...
No, 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 my focus is not to close the center.
Bill, now you're putting words in our mouths and that is not right.
You're a professional at that, aren't you?
Bill, I take exception to that and I demand an apology. I will never again be treated as though I am inferior to the other commissioners in any of those five counties or the city and I will never again be treated as though I am inferior to any other member of this commission. I have expressed my concerns with the law enforcement center to the administrators a long, long time ago and I have gotten no answer from any of them. You wanna know how much money we're willing to spend at the law enforcement center? By law, we can spend ten mils per year. That's about four-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars. There's your answer. You very effectively destroyed our first attempt at having our valued employees at the law enforcement center give professional, I feel unbiased opinions about what the problems are at the law enforcement center. And you did that by rescinding your vote as commissioners to have those terminations okayed by your own board. You did, that ten-page letter was never mentioned at the law enforcement center meeting. Not one word. But the police commissioner managed to take the three main points in it and make them his biggest concern. It was a travesty to Mr. Johnson.
Does that Mr. Johnson speak?
I am going to finish first if you don't mind. How do you like it? We have, you have, you sit here and tell me your board sat there when that motion was made. And by the way, I would like to tell you that Mr. Stephan made that motion because his board of commissioners demanded that he do it. That's public knowledge. That's in the Benson County press. Why didn't you wanna mention that? His commission is upset with him, but this commission isn't supposed to say anything to you.
You know, there is a kind of thing...
You're not answering, you're not letting me finish.
I'm answering your question, Mike.
I didn't ask you a question. I just told you something.
Yeah, you just asked me a question.
No, I didn't. This is not a question. This is what I'm telling you. You put numbers out there. It's gonna, I got a number yesterday. It's gonna cost six-hundred-and-forty-eight dollars a day to have a juvenile detention center at the law enforcement center.
Who did you get those numbers from?
Well, somebody who put all of the numbers together saying that, and that would be whether there are sixteen people there or eight people there or one person there. There is no innovation by this administration to find ways to recover lost revenue. This administration says things like, "Well, I didn't know there was any other training available." Whose job is it to know that there's other training available? It's the administration's job. In three minutes and one phone call, I found out all of those answers. But neither of your administrators thought that it was pertinent to call the state of North Dakota and say, "You know, we're really in dire straits here. We've gotta get people trained. We've been directed to reopen our juvenile center and we've gotta get it done as soon as possible." Not a phone call, not to the head of the training department at the Bureau of Prisons in, in Bismarck, not to Steve Engen, not to anyone. And then they say, "Well, they didn't tell us." I got big news for you. If you're an administrator, people aren't walking in saying, "How can we help you?" These administrators are good people who do not act, they react. And it's a difficult, difficult place to be in, in the very first place. But I, I've got the, I've got the chief of police coming up to me and saying, "There's no need for one hour of overtime in that facility. They have seventeen employees. You can put out a schedule that doesn't require one hour of overtime." That's the administrator's job. That's not the police chief's job. One other point I would like to make is on that day that that move, that motion was made to terminate your administrators, your board of directors threw their hands up in the door and said, "Well, what do you want us to do? Just lock the doors and send everybody home?" Five minutes before, one of them had bragged to me about being on the board for twenty-one years. You mean you didn't know the protocol for what would happen if your administrators were gone? If you're a board member, it's your job to know. And I defy you to tell me that the eight members of your board know what's going on because they don't. Sure, Mr. Fow from any county can sit there and say, "Well, I think these people need a raise." He gave more dollars in raises in his motion than he contributes to the law enforcement center in an entire year's time. You know, Ramsey County, who is, is, you know, I know that they don't wanna hear this, but Ramsey County and the people of Ramsey County are, who are paying the hugest share of this law enforcement center. And therefore, I believe that we do have the responsibility as commissioners, even though we're not all law enforcement center commissioners, I believe that we have the responsibility, number one, to provide the service in a safe and effective manner to every resident of Ramsey County who is required to use it. And number two, to do it in a financially responsible way. And you can throw your nine-hundred-thousand dollars down my throat as many times as you want to, but you would better have an administration that has ideas and means of implementing ways to recover that nine-hundred-thousand dollars so that we can continue to operate that institution. And now I am done and I would welcome anyone else to say anything they want.
Well, I'll answer Bill's question on how much money the county wants to throw at the law enforcement center is ten mils times forty-two thousand. We can legally give you more money than that. We're gonna have to this year because that's not gonna cover the bill, from what I see. So that's what we legally can give. So if they need a figure, but I wish they would come back with some figures. They're the ones that are, you know, running the numbers on their facility.
And that's what we're working on, Commissioner. We're, we're working because, you know, those numbers, those ten mil number will change after Elizabeth gets finalized with her abstracts and things like that that she has to change. The mil right now, Elizabeth, is what, forty?
Forty-two, six-hundred, six-twelve.
Forty-two, so four-hundred, four-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand is our cap for this year. And it may go to, what did you say?
We didn't let me ten mils off.
No, no, but, but, but I'm just trying to look at the numbers.
Okay.
For next year, it looks like a mil will be...
About four, uh, forty-five thousand, something.
About four-hundred-and-fifty thousand. So we should go to the law enforcement center administrator, finance administrator and say that four-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars is gonna be a cap. Not that it hasn't happened in the past. I was shared with Elizabeth that they did cap that at a number back in, what was it, two thousand and four or ninety-four?
Well, the cap was five mils back in ninety-four.
But I mean, they, they just, they just went to the other counties and said, "This is all the Ramsey counties in the country."
Well, I think we should go do it the other way around. They should tell us the services they're gonna provide and how much it's gonna cost. And then we'll know if we're gonna be in or out.
Yeah.
I mean, not, it's like sending a kid to town with five dollars, you know, "Bring me back some change." How much you gonna get? I go and grab the kids how much I'm gonna get back.
I'm thinking with that...
That's a poor way to do it. That's a poor way to do business is to ask us how much we're gonna give and then just give it to the county or the law enforcement center. You know, this is what we got. Spend it however you want.
We, we know...
No, we're not doing it that way. No.
We know as a present, great Commissioner, that, that with the way the numbers are going with this new EUI laws and with these new...
I, I, yeah, I've heard all that for months. Just have your administrators put a plan together for their expenses for the next year and then they can approach the commission with that plan. And I think Ramsey should be the first one to see this plan because they are putting the majority of the cow in this game.
We, we definitely are and I don't think it's not recognized, it is.
Well, then we need to know what's it gonna cost.
I started back in October and November trying to get the new administrators to come up with this and try to get this...
Well, you're not getting it done, Bill. If you can't get those administrators to come up with a plan where it's gonna cost us for the next year, then I, I got one suggestion and I won't say it, but I think you damn well know what I'm thinking.
This whole thing has been so distracted and way late, Commissioner, that it's gotta stop.
It's gotten into every paper in the last, in the state of North Dakota here the last couple days. And that's not the kind of attention I want.
No, it's not the kind of attention. And why is it, when something like this happens to another organization, does, does, does it go into this extreme? This isn't, this isn't, I mean, every once in a while you hear that something like this has happened in Fargo or Platteharts or somewhere else and especially out in the western part of the state. When you have that many new employees and that sense...
There's the first question. Why do we have to have that many new employees? We got rid of a ten-year employee, we got rid of a seven-year employee?
You had other employees walking out the door and I have a huge fear of even more very, very good employees leaving. And I don't care if you did throw money at them at the last meeting. Their morale, despite your letter stating how high morale was at the law enforcement center back in April, their morale is very, very poor. Now, it doesn't take me going to the administration filtering the morale... Now, it doesn't take me going to the administration filtering the morale status of twenty-five employees to tell me that their morale is low. And if you don't recognize that, something's wrong, because you're there every day, Bill.
I think it's time for Rob and Star to make their comments.
With the LAC bill, we just can't say this is how much we're gonna give you and that's it. Our LAC bill is based on our incarcerations. Whatever our incarcerations are, we have to pay. So, that's what the ten mils is based on. So, ten mils next year is worth approximately four hundred and fifty thousand, plus we get state aid, which is approximately eighty thousand that we all paid to the LAC, so five hundred and thirty thousand. But, like I said, there's years when it was only five mils that we've had to take out of the general fund due to the fact we, the big winners, we had to.
And then it was, we had, we had a kind of a perfect storm back in the early two thousands with some homicides and the meth.
Right.
Meth was just rampant, and it's getting bad again now. As part and parcel of why we see a lot more Ramsey County incarcerations.
And it fluctuates every year.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask a very important question. So, we don't, we don't have the ability to just put up this much money. The incarcerations have to have, happen to, to show that we need to. Not, not that it's not gonna happen, but we can't just dump this load of money on at the start of the year and say, "Okay, it's gonna be based as time goes on the need." Correct.
Usually when I figure the budgets for the LAC is I look over the overview of the last three, four years and figure it out. Okay, I need to increase now to cover our incarcerations. And this year with the task force, it's gonna be higher for our incarcerations. Then we have the issue of transporting. But like I said, that's not a huge thing so far for the LAC bill, but for Steve's budget for gas and.
I mean, I'm, I'm not going that it's gonna get used up, but my question is just that the need has to be shown, and it's not just, uh?
You just can't give them that much.
Yeah, okay.
But the one mil is where it gets kinda tricky, because you kinda estimated what it's gonna be when they start figuring their budgets and when we start doing it. And right now, we pretty much got what we're estimating at, because we've got our figures in now.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna guarantee you that this question's gonna come up again, because I'm not asking you to take a dollar amount and throw it at the law enforcement center. I'm needing to have an amount to go to them and say, "This is how obsolete our contracts are, people." Because we are escalating at the same ratio that you are, but when you are escalating at five thousand dollars a year, we're escalating at fifty. And your mil is worth thirteen thousand, ours is worth forty-four. The original contract, that how much money each entity puts into just for the initial operation of that law enforcement center has to get discussed immediately. And.
I agree with you.
And, and, and that's gonna be our starting point, so that everybody can retain themselves into the law who says they can't go over ten mils without getting into the general fund. And that's the ammunition that I want to bring forward, so that I can run some numbers and start the discussion, the huge discussion that we have to have done by the middle of September at the law enforcement center, to try to get those to go back to their colonies and say, "Okay, the initial input is gonna be this. Everybody puts in a base input or something." These contracts that we've got are obsolete. And this is all falling on us immediately. And that's why I said that we have to get done with this. We hitched our horses, our wages to these horses, and we have to go forward with this and figure out how we're gonna come up with a budget this year, or we're gonna fail again. And it's gonna be the same thing as before. We've got mega business to do out there, and we can't be discussing whether or not somebody got fired legally or not. It was all, it's all documented. I invite you to go out there and do it, because if anybody else wants to take on the responsibility of hiring and firing out there, you better know the laws. And they do. And now I would like to have Star and Rob, uh, because I talked to Rob again yesterday about that motion to re, to bring in. And it affects them too. Do you feel good about us taking your authority away to hire and fire people? Because it wasn't just the administration that got put under that. There was no high house on freeze. Their ability to hire and fire was affected just as well by that motion as, as our administrators. It was nonspecific.
Could you?
So, I would like them to say what they feel like, what you say. You know something? You can't do your job now. Your number one bullet point on your job, if you tell Jerry or Elizabeth or somebody else, "We're gonna take over your job, hire and fire you." Or Kevin. How's that gonna make you feel?
Bill, have you had a special meeting then for every hiring that's taken place since that motion was made?
Not hiring, it was just terminated.
Then stop saying hiring and firing.
Oh, okay, I'm just talking about that bullet point.
Please stop saying hiring and firing. And I'd like to bring one more point before you. This incident happened on July third. Why wasn't that man terminated? Why didn't you terminate him in a special session at your special meeting the day before your meeting was terminated? What, what did you have?
What are you talking about, Martha?
I'm talking about the firing of the.
That gentleman got found out what happened early in the morning. We had a special meeting at quarter to eight in the morning, and he was fired instantly, and he was arrested that afternoon, all in one day for him.
What is, on the day it happened?
Yes.
Gee, I thought he was fired a week ago Thursday at a special meeting.
The same day that the incident happened, he was.
Yes, according to the news reports, the incident happened on July third. He was fired on, I believe, either July tenth or July eleventh. July tenth, you had a special meeting? Is that correct?
I don't think.
And on July eleventh, you had another special meeting to fire him. Why didn't you have it on the tenth, when everybody was already sitting there?
I don't think the incident happened then.
It didn't happen?
It didn't happen then.
Can someone tell me what day the incident happened?
I do believe Bill is correct. I think it all happened in the same day.
Okay, so the, the newspaper report that said it happened early in the morning on July third is incorrect?
No, that's when it happened.
But you had the meeting on July eleventh?
No.
The special meeting?
No, that was on the last day.
That was on July third. It was not on July eleventh. Okay.
He's right. He was, he was terminated.
The day it happened?
The day it happened.
Okay.
Special news on the second, wasn't it?
Yeah. And my point is, if we could not have that, have a special meeting together, and we could not have got that done, that person would have been in our employment and arrested at the same time. And that would have made the newscast a lot different. So, I would like, I talked to Rob yesterday about his letter, about his concerns. And I would like him to tell me how he feels today, and how his employees feel today. About not only morale, but, but whether or not they are in fear of losing their jobs.
So, after we, after the meeting on Wednesday, Tanya Wheeler, actually, the HR gal came up and talked to me first about the vote, and asked me what my opinion was and if I felt comfortable with my job. And I told her, yes, at this point, I do feel comfortable. I don't feel that I'm gonna be terminated. Did I feel that way a month ago? No. There's no way that I'm gonna, you know, obviously, I presented the letter, okay? I wanted to put that letter forth without having that support at that time. After that meeting, after talking to Tanya, two of my employees came up to me expressing concern. Like, you know, okay, they lifted this. Are we gonna be targeted now for showing up at these board meetings? I assured them that I would not let that happen. You know, they were still concerned, but I assured them that I feel they're comfortable with that. I know that at this point, that, that if they were to target me and come after me personally, that that would be a big mistake. So, that's why I'm comfortable with, with, you know, the motion I was put forward.
But a month ago, you weren't that comfortable?
No.
A week ago?
Uh, I, after the motion was put forth to, to put the freeze on terminations, it had to be approved by the board, then I was okay. Then I felt, then I felt secure with my employment.
And hence, you, you wrote the letter?
Right. That had a lot to do with, you know, the, the letter wasn't something I just threw together. You know, it was something that I, I had thought about pretty extensively. Uh, then when I finally sat down and started doing it, I wanted to take more time in doing it, but found that, you know, getting it done was important. And as, as I went, it just, you know, there was a little bit, I just had a lot to say. Which, which sounds to me like that if, if, if my motion would have not been in place, this letter would have never been written, hence intimidation. No, I don't think he's gonna lose his job now either. I mean, we got the journalist sitting right here. Here's gonna be such hoopla if he got fired now that I can't believe anybody would be dumb enough to fire somebody after the amount of firestorm that's come down.
I'd also like to have Star give her point of view, because, um, I went and met with Star probably six weeks or so ago and invited, and I did meet with Rob as well, and invited them to come forward with these. These are things that should, as soon as they all shook hands and gave a group hug, because we all brought them all up, this is exactly what, what we needed. And we met with Rob, and, and we looked over his bullet points, point by point. And he's got good points. He's got so much experience back there that we, we absolutely need him to interject his ideas and his concerns so that we can move forward. We've got so much new staff back there, if they're making mistakes like having inmates walk behind them and leaving gates open and stuff like that, that definitely needs to be addressed.
Okay, I'm gonna.
That, that, that is absolutely crazy that that's happening, and we're happy that he brought that forward.
Okay, it's happening. That should not be happening.
It shouldn't be happening.
Why isn't our administrator taking care of these things?
Do you wanna know why it's happening? And I think Rob will back me up. It's because when they were so severely understaffed, they simply did not have time to watch those things.
But this is all new stuff, Bill.
And now, no, it's not. This has been going on for years.
But his letter.
He states in his letter that this stuff, this kind of stuff has been going on for years. It isn't this administration that's causing this.
No, it's his administration that's not taking care of it. That's been my point all along.
Why are you not condemning the past administration?
Because I got well in the past. I've dwelled with tapas.
No, we've hitched our.
No, I'm not.
We've hitched our ways to, to many of our administrators, and that's the way it is. They need support. They don't need condemnation and ridicule.
I, I would support them if their, their staff supported. Their staff does not support it. Here's a post, I'm not gonna say who it is, but here's a post I found on the internet. "When in your career is it time to say enough is enough?" Does that sound like a very happy employee to you? No, it's ridiculous.
This memo right here outlines from our HR director, which is on file.
I didn't understand that.
It has a signature on it.
Our HR director, who has not done any exit interviews, has called them from, on the telephone while babysitting their children. It's ridiculous, Bill. It's ridiculous, ridiculous, ridiculous. Let's ask, let's ask Steve Nelson if, if he thinks that everything's running smooth over there. He's gonna tell you, no.
We talked about it, Mark, and, uh.
But they're the wrong people. Bill, he asks, he asks you this, and then you don't answer it. We can't. And let's ask Steve Nelson. Let's, let's ask, let's have the chief of police come in here and tell us how much confidence he has in the administration of the law enforcement center. Let's ask Steve Nelson how much confidence he has in administration at the law enforcement center. Or do you feel that these are also extremely biased people who would, who, who don't know what's going on? Because that's what you've accused everyone who has made an accusation, including your own board members, that they don't have any idea what's going on, and therefore, we should not be considering their opinions as valid. Only your opinion is valid.
I'm reading what an HR director wrote.
And I have about as much, as much confidence in your HR director, who also happens to be our HR director at this point in time. You couldn't fill a teacup with it. Do you, do you realize that in that memo, that in that memo from, from Mr. Johnson, he didn't know they had an HR director? Whose fault is that? The administration's? I think so.
We've had that HR director for years, man.
Exactly. How come, how come, how come a department head didn't know that?
I, I have no idea. Why didn't you know that?
Oh, it was.
Because the captain never told them.
Yeah, it was as I was moving up, when I was in the, you know, sergeant.
I'm talking about, I'm talking about Captain Deegan, who was the captain when, when Mr. Johnson was there. Go ahead and finish, Rob, I'm sorry.
That would've been back like when I was a sergeant and stuff, and then you had, then he would've been the captain at the time. Uh, there was just no access. I didn't even know we had an HR person till I got into probably the juvenile program director position, or then I had more of a dealing with that type of, you know, determinations and stuff like that. Until then, I didn't even know we had a human resources person, much less who it was.
Who was the administrator at that time?
Dick worked with the administrator.
See, so he did know.
Well, Dick knew, yeah.
So, Rob, Rob knew as well when Dick was there, so if he did, if he knew when Dick was there, he knew when Peggy and Danny were there. I mean, you don't forget when you change administrations.
You know, I find it interesting how everything that happened prior to September first lays on the feet of, of Administrator Johnson. Because I've been asked time and again, where does the buck stop? The buck stops at the administration. Since then, the buck has stopped with everybody but the administration. And that is a point that I would like to make. And I'm sorry again for interrupting you.
Here's, here's a memo that I'd like to share with you guys. It comes from Tanya Wheeler, and she did do as much as well of a job as exit interviews as she could, simply because when people leave employment, sometimes they don't like to do exit interviews. But here's what happened. Out of the average turnover at the LAC is eighteen employees.
Per year?
Per year. Turnover from July, uh, July of two thousand thirteen to Ju- June of two thousand fourteen was twenty employees. It was a little bit, it's not a significant increase, but it was twenty.
From when, when was that?
From a year, like, a year ago July to, to June two thousand fourteen.
How, how long of a period have they been having twenty of turnovers a year?
Oh, it's average turnover per year, looking back for several years. So, four of the people out of the twenty, four of them resigned citing too much stress. Five of them resigned for various reasons, having since requested to come back. Two were, one or two shifts and never came back because it wasn't for them. Two resigned due to family relocations. One resigned to pursue, uh, pursue another job opportunity. One resigns citing lack of support from direct supervise, supervision, that was the captain. And one resigned for unsighted reasons. Four were terminated. And I welcome you to go look at those files and see the reasons why they were terminated, and compare those to what you need to do with FMLHA laws and right-to-worth laws, and all the laws that we have to abide by.
We don't have a right to.
Before we can, before we can fire.
Yeah, this is right to work.
Here's some statements that Tanya has documented from various employees who resigned. "I love my job, but my family comes first. I can't spend that much time, because they're demanded to have their overtime, and somebody calls and says, 'You're on call, you have to come.'" The way that those, uh, scheduling works is the way that it works. We talked about it at meetings, and people like their twelve-hour, on, twelve-hour off. They, that would be a huge morale issue if we changed that. So, the, so the, the city. Is that true? Uh, that's true. So, so they're wrong when they say they can come in there and eliminate the overtime, and we're wrong. They, it's more easily said than done. This is twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five. It's, and, and sure, they do it in their own workplaces, but, but they, they don't have that continual amount of employees. We've asked if there's any way that we can change that. Have we not?
Yeah, I've, I've, personally, to my staff, I've offered to change the schedule, change the hours that they're working. You know, they, they like it the way it is. You know, they, they like it the way it is, the issue falls into when, you know, you know, you have people that are short, you're short-staffed, and you're having to work extra shifts all the time. You know, that's, because the twelve-hour shift schedule's already taxing, but it's something you can handle. When you start adding more shifts and having to work mandatory overtime, especially on short notice, that's staff, that's probably at that goal.
One question I have, you know, I've been told numerous times, and there is discussion over months, that this is a high-stress job. You know, and if it's a high-stress job, I would strongly encourage you to go to eight-hour shifts, you know?
See, the reason why they like their twelve shift is because they-
Can I finish, or?
Yeah.
An eight-hour shift is much more readily available for people to handle if there's a high stress. And I've been told it's high stress.
And might I add that-
When people get tired, they make mistakes, they walk in front of prisoners, they need gates open. That's what happens.
And might I add that hopefully now that, that the, the pay scale is at a rate where you can make a living without working overtime, it might be more conducive to people. And you, and again, you have seventeen correctional officers. The need for overtime should not be there. From an administrative, from a financial standpoint, if you're gonna try to save some money, you know, when you start talking two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year in overtime, that's a great way to save some money.
That's, that's what they call business, Bill.
That's what they call business, and we keep getting this business, you know, pushed at us and how it has to be run as a business. You know, it's like the old saying, and, and, and before you think I'm talking out of my hat, you need to remember that I worked for forty years in the workplace, and almost every place I worked was a twenty-four-seven place. Okay, having that said, I wanna add something. Brady's nice, and that's what we used to call overtime, is Brady. Brady's nice, but ask anybody, you get enough of it, it's gonna kill you. And it's gonna, it's gonna increase your stress, and you are going to have a more difficult time doing the job effectively.
Uh, we continually ask them to review that policy. In fact, the other day I asked them, if a new employee comes on to this, try to ask them if they would be willing to run eight-hour shifts solely to do this. Part of the reason why is because if they work three days on, then they get days in a row off. They get days in a row off to, to relax and spend time with their families and stuff, and they appreciate that. It saves them time on transportation, or money on transportation, and it, and as long as they're there, they just assume cover the, the extra time. And on the other side of the fence, um, when they do get called in, they usually get called in on one of those days that they have off. And that's gonna happen regardless, so instead of working five days and getting called in on your two days off, you're getting called in on one of the days that you've got four days off. And it isn't so, so demanding on you. I'm just starting to understand, you know, the reasons for wanting to stay with that. It's been that way forever, and we've tried to migrate away from it, and we won't have to, but, uh, you're right. We do need to save money wherever we can, and I have asked, and I asked Rob and Starpo, if we get new employees on, if we would be able to still manage that scheduling task by having eight-hour and twelve-hour employees, uh, working together. And we're working on it, are we not?
Yeah, that, for, the way my facility's set up, it's just not possible, cause I've got one person on each shift, and I have to cover the twenty-four hours, so I'd have to add people to go to eight-hour shifts. And with the twelves, I can, you know, like, if two people work one day, two people work the next, there's no way for me to incorporate an eight-hour.
But you have to hire more people.
Yeah, right.
But you eliminate overtime.
Yeah, right now, I'm scheduled, uh, there's sixteen hours of overtime from my staff's schedule every week.
Well, the, the, the last thing I wanna do, I don't wanna become a micromanaging guy, I don't want to do it at all. I feel administrators should do that. My experience at school board was if the administrator wasn't doing a goddamn job, he, they know who's gonna be gone. It's not gonna be the school board, it's gonna be the administrator. And it's up to them to run it. And that's why this situation is very similar to a school. All it's wrong. Administrator's in charge, run it, keep it into black, and do it correctly. Now, when you get in economy government up here, it's been an adjustment for me because, I mean, there's no administrator in shots, and we have to do a compartment, which I think is, went well. But that law enforcement center is similar to a school, where an administrator runs it. And if it's not getting run right, and it's making every paper in the state, and we have this much poor morale, and this many people leaving, I'm not saying they're all leaving because of morale or issues in the law enforcement center. Twenty in a year is a lot of turnover. How many employees do you have on the Rob?
Personally, in my facility-
No, I mean, in the whole thing, would you just give me a count?
Oh, you're right.
Thirty?
I'd say close to fifty.
Yeah, close to fifty.
Yeah, I was gonna say forty-seven.
Okay. Twenty's a lot.
That's forty-seven.
Twenty's a lot.
That's over forty percent of the staff during the summer.
Yes, we're working on, we're working very, very hard, people, I'm trying to get this twenty-four-seven, uh, scrum program up. Rob's back, so he could come over and help us adjust these new, uh, uh, people into our- But we can, we can get this program too, if you take out Rob, we, we gotta have it.
Exactly.
Steve?
Steve can do that.
We're hoping to hire, to have, let Rob hire another person that he can use to relieve him from those duties and stuff like that, and we can utilize his knowledge because that's where his background is, and that's- But Bill, that's a mistake we're making right here, when you're talking like that, me. That should be the administrator doing that. I think your board is getting way too involved in this. A school board is there to set policy, and that's what the law enforcement center should be there to do, is set policy, not run it. Set policy for the administrators to run it, the day-to-day operation.
I'm saying that-
Don't get involved, don't get involved.
If you-
Believe me.
If other-
It'll consume you.
If others-
Shh.
If other people-
Shh. Okay? Don't get involved, cause it's gonna consume you, I can see it already has. I bet you don't even sleep very well at night.
Oh, I do.
Don't print that, please.
I do, Commissioner, but, uh-
I watch out for the best interest of you.
I've been, I've been-
But we gotta do it right.
Simply because of all this scrutiny.
Fine, yeah, I agree with you, but we kinda have them administrators, either sink or swim. One or the other.
Everything I see, Bill, is you trying to assist in administration. Like, everything I see is, is you working as an administrator. I, I, I don't think that that's, you know, I think, I think Ed Brooke has, has made a extremely valid point.
One other thing I'll add, just, I wanna interrupt you a little bit for another point, I think you know it. In a school district, the last thing you wanna lose faith in is people. And you don't want them people to lose faith in that school board. If they lose faith in that school board, you've got a very big problem. And then they won't be happy with the school, they won't be happy with whatever you do. But you need to let those, like I said, let them administrators sink or swim. I mean, hey, to give us a budget, what's it gonna cost to run their situation next year? And it's up to them to come up with those numbers. I mean, the board is there to set policy. The commission, no, it's a little different deal. We're, we set policy, but we have to carry it out. So, that's the difference in running a school and being an accounting commission to me. And it took me a while to learn that, but that's the way it works. And that law enforcement center board is strictly there to set policy, and administrators are supposed to run it. Now, and that's the attitude you gotta, you, you can't let that consume you. You've gotta keep an open mind. You've gotta look things over, weigh things out. You just have to. There'll come a tough decision down the road, you bet. Maybe there won't, I don't know, but another decision, you've gotta have an open mind with. For the betterment of the facility. Let them do their job, you don't want micromanage addicts. I don't know nothing about it. You know, I gotta ask these people, how should we do it? I ask the sheriff, what should we do? I ask their state's attorney, what should we do in this situation? I ask Kevin, what should we do when we're in a rogue situation? I rely on their knowledge. If we put those people in position of leadership, then let them lead. Let them lead, let them do their job. But if the job not getting done satisfactory, then you need to step up and do something different.
And that's exactly what I'm asking for here today, is for everybody to just do their job.
And that's exactly what I'm asking for, they're not doing their job.
Steve, we never did that.
Yeah, we never did-
I would like to hear from Steve, and I would also like to hear from Star.
Okay. I don't care who's running the LEC, I don't care who's there. The three things that are basic for our law enforcement center, in my knowledge and people I've talked to, is care, control, and custody. Okay, I'm just talking to jail, period. Those are the three things that are minimal you have to provide. Okay? Care is feeding them, making sure they're in a safe place, and their medical needs or whatever are met with. Control is the second one. And that's because they're in jail for a reason, right? You have to have a little bit of control. And then the custody is just being, you know, they're in custody because they're any criminal, they have to be kept in custody. And Rob's letter kinda addresses that, in my opinion, exactly. We don't have those three things right now. We have the care and custody, but we don't have the control. And, uh, on Tuesday night's meeting with Jessica, uh, Gil?
Yeah.
Jessica, yeah. Major comments about the medical issues going on back there? Okay, well, that's either here or there, but those are the things that we need to have. But then she also said that the monkeys are running the facility, and that's what I see. And that's what I see when I read that letter, about the inmates walking behind the staff, the, the, the doors being left open, the, uh, that's the control part that we're missing. Does that make sense? We have, and that kinda goes with the inexperience of our staff. But that's where the, the, in my opinion, the administration needs to step in and say,
Leaders.
Let's get back to basics and start, even though they aren't trained yet, you still have to have the basics known. Right? Inexperience, okay, fine, you have to, you still have to step up, and there has to be some leadership to do that. And, and Ed was, you know, there has to be some leadership from somebody, and the comments that I get from these people are, there is no leadership. And that's part of the problem. The sergeants are inexperienced, the captains inexperienced, the deputents, I don't know. But they don't have that, and that's what they need. And that's what we need to do, is get down back to the basics, regain control of our facility, and then I think that's gonna help with our morale, it's gonna help with keeping our staff, it's gonna help with all these other issues that we're constantly dealing with lately, are gonna go away by themselves.
Mm-hmm, alright.
But we gotta get back to the basics of running that facility like it should be run as a jail. Care, control, and custody.
Good leaders go listen to the people that are working for them.
And, and then you guys said, that's, I like careful, let's get back to that. I bring a prisoner in, I can see violations, I'm putting it out to our jail staff, I shouldn't have to do that. I'm not there, I don't work in the jail. I have been years ago, but I don't work, I don't work in the jail for thirty years. But if I can see it, the sergeants and the captain and the administrator should be also seeing it. And, and the fact that we have no real experienced leadership, to me, it falls back on Ms. Deacon, because she's the, one of the trained individuals, that administrator, should be back here doing things and, and saying, okay supervisor, here's your job, do it, you know? If you don't know your job, why are you a supervisor?
Is she doing that?
I don't know, I can't, I'm not back in the jail, I don't, I don't keep track of her, I don't, I don't know if she is or not. She might be.
She, she spent a huge moment coming back.
But it's not getting done, because we, as a-
Are they not listening to her? I mean, do they, do they listen to what's being said, what-
I don't know.
What, why isn't the staff responding to all of this leadership that's being offered? Then, if all this leadership is being offered, how can you have an entire staff that's not listening? I'm, I mean, your first day on the job is the day you start listening. Your first three months on the job are the days you listen the most, because you wanna learn your job.
Most of our staff is young. And I think, say, when I was young, when I took a job, my first probably six months was sitting listening, learning. Trying to learn, trying to get answers, I didn't care what job it was. Not necessarily this job.
But these new employees don't get to do that.
Yeah, unfortunately, yeah, unfortunately, I slammed to the wolves, Luke asked, and-
But that's when the leaders, that's when your leaders need to step up and, and back up the new wolf, the younglings, and, and help, you know, we have four trained staffs down there, right? According to four correctional officers that are trained. Those four officers should be split up among the shifts, training all the rest of these. You should have one of these trained people, and they should be responsible for bringing these younger ones along. And whether it's happening, I don't, I don't see it happening, but-
We're getting lessons in administration here. We're, and, and I think that, that every day the administrators are getting lessons in administration, and that frightens me because it is too high risk of a facility to have administrators that need lessons in administration. And that's, that's my opinion. And again, I'm not saying that these are bad people. I am saying that they lack the knowledge, and, and it isn't even the knowledge, it's the ability to administer.
So, if we got everything down to the basics, which is the equation, and it's starting to build from there, I think that's the only way we gotta go, to be, to fix what's going on. Get back to the basics, get down to the earth, and we'll build from there, we have to.
And I've asked the administrators to present to the board, uh, sheet, or she says it's two pages to start with. Two pages of things that are trained to the new employee, the new employee has to go over and, uh, check, a checklist, so it's be the things that they need to do, or they need to understand before they hit the floor. And then they go on to start this other trainings that they go for days on end and go away and do that.
The one where they're working?
Rob is, uh, Rob is very, very experienced.
He's a huge resource that doesn't need that.
He was a big, big resource. Uh, we asked him to take on other responsibilities, and he's done a tremendous job with that. We need to get, we need to get that responsibility, uh, you know, help with that responsibility so he can, so he can, uh, help us over on the other end. And we're, and we're working on that plan.
And I, that's-
Administration is working on that plan.
Well, we need to move it fast, I mean, it's as simple as taking a job description for a correctional officer and saying, here's the policies, procedures, and the rules of the facility, here's your job, do it. If you're a sergeant, here's your job. Do it. Uh, and if you can't do it, we just put you back down to the crash, you go find somebody else who'll step up and do what we need to do.
Again, you're teaching administrators, you're how to administer, do we need to, do we need to hire someone to teach? Administrat-
Hey, Bill, exactly, I'm sorry, go ahead.
And I think Bill is, is exactly, I, I think Bill is, I think Bill is working very hard. He keeps saying we, but I think it's he, is working very hard to try to get these administrators to a place where they understand what they need to do. And, and, and Ed's absolutely right, the stress of it is, I mean, how many hour- Bill, six weeks ago, or two months ago, you, you sat right in this chair beside me, and you said, I bet I was at the law enforcement center from forty to sixty hours in the last week. Is that the job of the chairman of the, of the law enforcement center board?
Not at all.
You are, you are doing administrative duties, and, and, and that's not, you shouldn't be doing, you shouldn't have to be doing that.
I, I appreciate your concern. And, and Ed, I really appreciate your comments.
Oh, I-
It does get to be stressful when you're trying to help somebody, trying to, um, but I, I don't take on any administrative role there. A lot of times you're down there signing paperwork and stuff like that.
I just, I just kind of wanna piggyback on what Myrna just said because, uh, and, and maybe it'll help you a little bit, uh, Commish, uh, is you come and see me twice in the last month in my office. And this whole calendar year to this point, I've seen Ms. Deacon in my office once and that was when my sprinkler head broke against, above my desk. Uh, I get more, you give me more feedback and you've come and asked me my own thing and I'm thinking more than I get from that. So that's, I mean, just to kind of piggyback on what Myrna was saying, I think she's exactly right.
Well, and they have, they have no idea what number one, no idea.
And they oversee you, Star?
Right.
Ed, Ed, we hired a captain of a jail with no experience in the jail. We, we're, we're currently sent him to school, CO school, to run the jail. He's supposed to be overseeing these sixteen or seventeen employees we have. He's never worked in a jail. That's the type of people that our administrators are hiring. The, the issue with the last employee that we hired, I will guarantee you, if you saw his rap sheet, you would have never even considered to hire him. And yet we went ahead and hired him, just shows the lack of leadership in this administrator. And I don't know if the board, well, I know what the problem is, the board, law enforcement center board proper does not get the information that they need. Because I can't imagine that we would be hiring these people and paying, we're paying this person forty thousand dollars a year to run our jail, he's never ran a jail in his life, and he's supposed to be telling Bill the procedures, the safety, and all the other aspects of the jail, and he does not know. It's, it's, it's ludicrous that the, the things that go on there. I mean, this is why I needed to have this pointed out, I have sat back and waited and waited and waited for this administrator to do their job. This just screams at me that they are not doing their job. You do not hire, you know, do you want me to send Myrna out to Redding Farm? I don't think it's gonna fly well. And then when Myrna fails, she's gonna point a finger at Lonnie. The failure to this is administrative, and it needs to either be told point blank, you've got thirty days to get this ship upright or you're done. Obviously Benson County has had enough, they've already set their little fire over the ship. We just heard from Steve Nelson, there's no leadership, there's just no responsibility, there's safety issues. What's gonna happen when somebody gets killed? If you think we're on the front page of the Devils Lake Daily Journal now, we're gonna be on the front page of every paper in, in the United States. Because, oh, we forgot about that, sorry.
We were trying.
We were trying, we were trying.
One word of caution for you is, go in with an open mind, you know? Don't get so close to the situation and you can't keep your mind open. Because you've gotta make a tough decision, you gotta do it, you know?
I mean, leadership starts with the board. But I, leadership starts with the board. Absolutely, when you say the buck stops, the buck stops with the board, that is why I'm here today. Because I don't wanna be the one going, getting my finger pointed that one day when all this falls apart, because it's going to. And the reason the board does not know anything is because the administrators, pe- people are keeping it quiet. And if I can shush Steve or I can, well, not Steve, but if I can keep Rob quiet, I can keep Star quiet, I can keep all that away from the board, and that's exactly what's happening. Except for a few brave individuals have walked forward and said, you know what, this isn't right, here's what's happening. And you, and you say it's hearsay? Well, it's hearsay from all the employees that are there currently and a whole pile of them that no longer work there because they were forced out, they weren't, your little letter, yeah, they didn't, they weren't fired, no. But when you, when you get told, shut up, that's intimidation, Bill. And I know that Rob was told that, it's in that letter, and that's intimidation. You don't tell your employees to shut up, you listen and you learn from them. This administrative is shutting them down left and right.
When, when you, when you send a, a person to a certification school and after the first week they gets called into the office and told, you don't talk about what's going on back at our facility at the state. Don't you ever talk about that again or you're done. That's intimidation.
And, and Steve had a question.
No, no question, I just have a comment, is there are loads of people out there outside of Devils Lake and the Lake region in the correctional, working in corrections, that are willing to help if you have questions. You can call them on the phone, you can call them, uh, Danny could call them, and, and they would be willing to assist short term. I mean, they can't come over here and, but there is people that would, you know, help if they reach for it. If they reach out for them, because Steve Hagan is a very good contest. He is, he would, he would bend over backwards to help, okay, here's my problem, what do I do? Or I've got this issue, what do we do to try and correct? I, I, I know, Steve, I've known him for years, he would bend over backwards to help.
But he has not been called.
But you have to reach out to them, you have to reach out to these people. You know, we've got sheriffs all over the state that run the jails in their communities and, and the sheriff in rugby, they went through their little turmoil here. He has called and said, hey, Steve, your administrator needs any help, have him call me because I just went through all this. You know, with this, you know, problem with we're out, and the whole, the whole jail almost got shut down. There are people out there, but you have to call and talk to them, you have to call and ask them. So there's avenues for them to, and I'm trying to be a, a, a solution and not, I'm trying to help to kind of, let's get this back.
Yeah.
That'd be the simplest thing to do here.
Yeah.
Get it back, get us-
Get us back, get us started, get us stabilized, and then we can work on the littler things, well, let's get the big things done. But there are people out there that will help. I'm not one, 'cause I don't know enough about the jail, 'cause I don't work in a jail. But I know people that are, and I, I've talked, and they will gladly, if you go to these state committees, these trainings, there are people, the instructors there, if you pull them aside and, hey, what do we do about this? But they have to ask. People are just gonna go up and say, hey, can I come, you know? If you ask them, they will help, so let, you know, and Danny could talk to me, I'll give you some names. We need to, to help her, or whoever it is, and it's, I don't care, let's just, you know?
And when the administration is asked for assistance, they need to, they need to, if they don't know the answer in, in, in how to assist, they need to say, let me check into this, I'll give that to you, not, boy, I'm glad that's your problem, not mine. And that's, that's the kind of things that our administrator is saying. That you can't do that to people, especially people in such a high-stress place.
Just for, for Ed and Scott's information, did I say anything, Steve, that was the untruth about, about administrator, the way the people that they're hiring? Am I wrong in that?
Nope.
This is why it's on, on, on-
I've been, I've been told by some employee myself, they don't wanna bring names forward and I didn't-
No, they're, because they're scared.
It's not my job.
Because if you bring that name forward, you're fired. And, and, and I don't wanna use, I shouldn't use the word fired. They're gonna intimidate you.
I will make your job so miserable-
I will make your life so miserable that I guess what, you're coming to work at two AM. Oh, your, your kids got T-ball today? You gotta work. So, no, did they get fired? No, they got intimidated.
Mr. Chairman, may I speak?
Yes, sir.
I think it's time, maybe that when you have your law enforcement board that you two are on, you better inform the other counties. Let them get, get them to point out what, tell them what the problem is. It sounds to me as if somebody here is not getting the message. And it, and it, and it sounds to me like it's got to be this law enforcement board that these county commissioners sit on. They're spending tax dollars, Ramsey County's probably putting the most in, but they're all obligated. And they better know the facts. Thank you. Thank you. Is there any more comments? I mean, we, we hatched on this for quite a while. I think a lot of things came out in the open here today. Star?
I'm good.
Rob? Steve?
Ryan, just to carry help.
Scott?
Uh, I do wanna say thank you, special thanks to Star for the job that you do back in nine one one. You know, I've worked directly with you, we are also a very professional group. Good job, uh, thanks to all of you for being here.
I guess maybe I do wanna make a comment. I know Myrna said throwing money at dispatch or whatever probably won't solve the problem and that wasn't what I was trying to do yesterday, or what day was it?
Wednesday.
It was a Wednesday. I was trying to make a point that our pay scale is so messed up, so messed up. The captain of the jail was hired at higher pay than I make. I've been there for, in August, it'll be fifteen years, in my position for ten. And he was hired to make more than I make. Their jail staff all make more than my people. It wasn't about the pay, it was about the principle.
And for your own home too.
And I, and I hate that, Star, and I am not opposed to those pay raises that went into effect by any means. I just, I, I, I just am looking at it from the taxpayer dollars position. Where are we gonna get the money? The last thing I want is the law enforcement center to close.
Right.
That is the very last thing I would ever want to see happen. But I do want to see it run properly.
To run properly at locals.
Well, and that's, that's my, that's my, that's my biggest fear. And we think we're spending a lot of money at a hundred and twenty-five dollars a day for do-nas? Wait, we're sending sixty other people down the road.
We just took one step in the right direction, I think, Star, uh, that's why we hired that professional step and rate and, uh,
So-
Consult, salary consultant to, uh, to step in and do this for us because Tanya's an HR person, but she doesn't, you know, he'll do a much more comprehensive and concise job of doing this for us and, and, you know, this predates this administration as well. We've always had the luxury of being flush with money and being able to give money back to the counties because of, and it reflected in how we, how we run the business there. Everybody's getting brought into the real world when it comes to salaries and stuff like that, you hear it all over town. We're not exempt from that. So, you know, I, I, I appreciate all the discussion, I've, I've heard more today than I've heard in the past. And, uh, and I am very open-minded, I think, and I will take all of these comments of it. Either hope and, and that.
And, and you know, Bill, you told us last September with the task force going into effect and with the scram bracelets going into effect, that we were gonna run into much, much higher incarceration and, and cost rates. And we knew that, I guess we just didn't know until what extent.
It's awesome.
Nobody did-
For, and, and what we said, we'll be, we still don't know what's gonna-
These programs are working excellent.
It, it's, it's more of a trend in the, in the, in the entire state than it is to say the task force is creating all this problem. It's, we're, the oil is affecting us here plain and simple. We're getting the overflow and it's coming this way. And it's not just the task force, it's not just the, the, uh, scram, the news, it's not all of it, it's just the world. It's, it's ours, it's, it's coming, and it's just, that's been the increase, it's not just, would you agree Lonnie?
Absolutely.
It's not just that we put a task force-
In the past when we were down in Setting Pond, I didn't have to do a lot of criminal records checks 'cause I knew these people for the last twenty-five years. Now, when I go down to LEC on Monday mornings, I'm having to do a background check on pretty much everybody because they're new faces, we have, we're living in a very fluid society right now. And as far as the drug task force, it definitely is bringing more work in. But what you're seeing right now is, up until about August, September last year, a lot of our drug addicts were doing the OxyContin, you know, hydrocodone with prescription meds. The prices, the street prices have gone up so high on them, they're going back to meth and heroin and things like that. But with the meth and the heroin bringing a lot more crazy behavior. So what we're seeing now is the drug task force is definitely bringing in people. But highway patrol, they pull over somebody for speeding or outdated tab or whatever and boom, it just falls on their lap, they're not really even having to work hard for it.
Hey, one thing that Sheriff Nelson said, he said that they're creating a problem. I, I don't think anybody feels that the drug task force is creating a problem. It's just them doing the job correctly is in a, essence, causing a, a problem in more people being incarcerated and, and that. Uh, I, I don't think anybody here feels that they are, what they're doing is bad.
And to this for, you know, for everybody's sake, but, you know, for LEC especially, what we deal with that on a daily basis. Williston just built a brand-new jail two years ago.
Too small.
They're told. Ward County had a seat speeds, I think they're currently is like ninety beds. They were just building a brand-new jail, two hundred and fifty-six beds is what they're planning on building for. That's what I'm getting at when I'm talking about these trends, look at, look, and you're, you're just coming, and we're next and, and we're seeing the trend, and we're gonna have to look at that down the road to have a, uh, would you agree?
Absolutely, and the state has gotta step up, you know?
The state is gonna have to step up.
We had a good meeting with our legislators.
We did.
I got the real information that they really understand-
These are the things that are coming and, and the-
Governor understands that.
The problems with our inmates and our cost per, you know, is gonna be, is gonna, is gonna keep going. Uh, probably a year from now, it's probably gonna be seventy, thirty counties that, you know, just because of our facility. And that's just what's coming up, that's what I see coming down the road.
They did a basic beta traffic on Highway two.
Well-
I bet it's doubled in last-
We, you would not believe the number of people that we are dealing with at the law enforcement center that come here and run out of gas because they're trying to get to Williston because they think they got a job out there. And all of a sudden they get here, they got no more money, well, how do I keep going? Well, then they get stuck here, and then we end up dealing with them. And it's, you know, and that's the kind of things that are, you know, happening, it's gonna keep continuing. So-
I know Highway fifty-two, the last couple of years we've heard, you know, the cut across, you might have to mind on how busy that is.
Oh.
This is not here.
Oh, by the way-
Whoever did it busy, if not busier, I think.
I do wanna bring this to your tent and maybe get your opinion on this, but I don't know if any of you heard this. It ended up even notified about Burlington Northern's plans for the railroad going through here.
For another rail?
No, 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 no. They sent me a certified, myself and the chief of police, a certified letter last week saying they're gonna raise the track speed through Devils Lake from thirty-five, is it thirty now, to sixty miles an hour.
When they get those more miles?
No, well, yeah, where, where you, no, right now, I mean, they're planning on implementing this within the next few months. So anyway, I want you guys to, because their chief shareholder is trying to set up a meeting with the BNSF and, and the mayor and, and we're, we're trying to fight this, 'cause it is not a good thing. Uh, you want trains going by your house in sixty miles, that's what they're talking. The one, the only one that's gonna really affect is Twelfth Avenue, which is right by your house. Now, they go thirty right now and they're gonna go to thirty, they're gonna wanna, they wanna take that off and let them rip through here at sixty. And it's not a good deal. I just wanted the board to be aware of that, 'cause I'm, I'm sure you're gonna probably hear about it in the next week.
It, is it the cost of slowing down and speeding up that-
They're trying to clear the tracks faster. So it's too hard for the trainings, these trains to come, and by the time they slow down to get, you know, get back up to speed.
Yeah, yeah. Trains move all night.
I'm just amused with it.
You can hear them, I can hear them from home.
I can hear them.
You know, I think we-
Anyway, I just, I just wanted the board to know that that's coming down the bike here in the next, uh, oh, probably the first of the month, I think, is when they're trying to set that meeting up, but in case you get hearing about it, you want to attend, I mean, that might be a concern that we have to. That's just one little thing, but, I thought, longer than everybody here, I thought I mentioned it.
Well, yeah, as far as the state is concerned, is law, is that a community coordinating- Oh, yeah. As far as the state is concerned, as well, I was at a community coordinating committee meeting yesterday that, that met with, um, the state, state director of, of Human Services, Mel, that works right underneath Maggie Anderson. And he was doing some pretty fierce scriddling the entire meeting. So I would guess that, that the message that we gotta have more help because we have more issues we have to deal with was nailed on the head with him yesterday.
He did come up to me after the meeting, he says, oh my goodness, we need some help here.
Yeah, let's deal with that.
Dealing with human assets and other things and trying to get a center and all, and then dealing with the tenant, you know? So hopefully, and that with our, I said we had that meeting with our legislators, that went very well. So hopefully with the human service budget comes through, we're working on that, so. And that was, he was very taken aback that he didn't know what he heard.
Yeah, I, I think his, his eyebrows were right along here during most of the meeting.
So we're trying to push the, get some help that way too, so.
Save the system.
Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Got it.
Second?
So...